Evening to those of you who are in attendance. We appreciate you being here. If you would, take a moment and check your cell phone to make sure that you have placed it on silent or vibrate, and we would appreciate it. For those of you who are participating remotely, good evening as well. Since we are once again live streaming our meeting, we are asking members of the public to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point of the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they may wish to make one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and after completing the public comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank all of you, whether you are participating remotely or in person, for your cooperation this evening. And with that, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Here.
Mr. Beneki?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of May 2nd, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections? Then, hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President, we have the Mishawaka Optimists Club Youth Appreciation Awards presentation.
Thank you. At this time, if a representative of the Optimists Club could come forward, we can begin the proceedings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor.
And greetings to President Hicksonbaugh.
This is the President of the Optimists Club.
Ah.
I would like to introduce Jackie Guyer. Thank you.
Thank you.
As President of the Mishawaka Breakfast Optimists Club, along with my colleague Gary, I am pleased to recognize six recipients of the 27th Annual Dave Fisher Memorial Youth Appreciation Award, given to graduating seniors who exhibit the aspirations and qualities of optimism spelled out in the Optimist's Creed. The creed is the basis for selection of these students. It begins with the first line, which states, and I quote, "Promise yourself to be so strong that nothing can disturb your peace of mind." There is much more to be said of the reasons that these students have been recognized beyond scholarship, athletic ability, and competitive spirit. They embody an optimistic outlook and positivity. Students, would you mind coming up to the near area here in front? May I present, please? And just, some of the students are not here, but just raise your hands if I call your name. From Marion High School, Gail Calderon, and Elizabeth Sailor Shea. From Mishawaka High School, Sarah Bashara, who I believe is attending the Mishawaka Award Evening, and Ryan Allman. And from Penn High School, Salish Nagu- Nagugi, I'm not sure about that, and Logan Cook. Mr. Wood, would you please say a few words to share your thoughts regarding these students, some of whom you have gotten to know during their years in school? Thank you.
First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Optimists Club. This is something that we have traditionally done at a breakfast. COVID has kind of put the kibosh on that for a while, but the most important thing that happens at that breakfast is the honoring of students in our community from these three high schools. And so I'm very grateful that the Optimists, despite not having a breakfast, continue to honor kids. One of the things that I'm also thankful for is that throughout the pandemic, we know it's been particularly hard for students. And so these kids here today, I think, deserve extra recognition for going through and enduring what they have had to over the course of the past couple of years. I know some of these kids and have had the opportunity to not only see them in action, one is the President of a Youth Council and a coworker of mine, who I happened to see just yesterday, working very hard for the city of Mishawaka. So I know that they are great citizens, not only members of great high schools and, you know, excelling in their roles as high school students. They're just good citizens, and so couldn't be more honored to continue to recognize these kids. And I want to thank again the Optimists Club for making it happen.
And for one final point, I would like to give this award, which is a plaque of the Optimist's Creed. Look it up online, it's there. And I also wanted to mention, I did not realize, I counted how many parks there are in Mishawaka according to the website. So I want to know how close I am. Can you guess how many? Thirty-three parks in Mishawaka. Quite amazing, and thank you very much for your services. Thank you very much. Have the mayor join me with some pictures outside. We have to present.
Little goody basket.
All right, well, honorees, if you could hold on a second before you exit, along with your family. Let's see if we have any of the council members who have anything that they want to add to tonight's proceedings. Madam President, unless there is something else that you wanted to share with us.
Well, I just feel like it's quite an honor to be able to present in front of the Common Council of Mishawaka, which is a privilege, as well as having this wonderful group join us tonight, as well as all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank also the parents of these great kids and children. They've done a great job in raising their kids.
Thank you, Mr. Odell. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mrs. Volker?
Of course. So I have the question that everybody wants to know. What is the criteria to win this award, the scholarship? Can you tell us a little bit, maybe, Ms. Shea? Could you tell us a little bit about what you had to do in order to apply and win the scholarship? Just because I know your mom and dad. Well, very nice. Thank you so much. It must have been fun, made people happy.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Any other comments from the council?
I would just mention, in addition, these students weren't applying through us at all, the Optimists Club. It is people who are representative of the schools. It could be any number of ways that the individual schools make the selection, so we don't know who they will be in advance.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Mr. Mamelanti?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh, thank you very much for the presentation. Not a question, but more of a comment, just wanted to congratulate the young scholars on a job well done. I know how much work it is to maintain and juggle schedules throughout your high school career and to do other items as well. So very well done, and best of luck to all of you.
Thank you. Then if there's no one else, I will also add my congratulations to the scholarship recipients and their families. You obviously have worked long and hard to receive this honor, and it sounds like it is well deserved. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you also to the Optimists Club for not only what you've shared with us this evening, but for the good work that you do in the community on a daily basis, on a regular basis. So it is groups like the Optimists Club that really round out the community and make this the type of place that all of us want to live in. In my opinion, it's very appropriate that this is named after Dave Fisher, who was an assistant principal at John Young Junior High School back in the day when I was there, and I think tracked me down to Mishawaka High School as an assistant principal, so he could assign me more detention back in the day. But what a wonderful man and what a wonderful educator. So very appropriate that these scholarships and these awards are named after him. So thank you to everyone involved for the good work that you are doing, and thank you for sharing this with us this evening. Now, before you, it sounds like there are going to be some photos that'll be taken out in the hallway, which is certainly appropriate. I was actually going to say, you're welcome to stick around for the rest of the city council meeting if you choose, but I promise you, our feelings will not be hurt if you decide to just blast off out of the door as soon as you're done with your photos out there. But please come back and visit us at any time that you so are inclined. So thank you all for sharing this with us this evening. And you are released to go take your photos. All right, Madam Clerk, the floor is yours once again.
Thank you so much. I have a letter from the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding their recommendations from their May 10th, 2022 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following use variance was considered. Appeal number 22-10, an appeal submitted by MCC Self-Storage requesting a use variance for 1010 South Mirrorfield Avenue to allow self-storage in a C1 general commercial zoning. The board, with a vote of 5 to 0, recommended approval subject to the following conditions, if I may omit reading the link.
Please do so.
This is signed by Kerry Myers, Administrative Planner.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, of which I'm aware, nor do we have any ordinances on first reading, so we'll move into resolutions.
I suggest that we do the other one while the mayor's taking pictures. If it would be all right with the President, if we can go ahead and go with 2022-12? Before, and wait, and did the other one last with the acquisition?
Not a problem. Let's go ahead and move into Proposed Resolution 2022-12 then.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1010 South Mirrorfield Avenue, Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a use variance to allow self-storage in C1 general commercial at 1010 South Mirrorfield.
Thank you. We will now move into the public hearing of Proposed Resolution 2022-12. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chris Chalkley with Jones Peter Rafinsky. Our address is 325 South Lafayette Boulevard in South Bend.
If I can interrupt you for a minute.
Yeah.
Chief, could you pull the, thank you. We have some exuberant optimists in the hallway who are celebrating their prestigious awards, so thank you for your patience, sir. And please.
So Chris Chalkley, JPR, Jones Peter Rafinsky, 325 South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend. Here representing MCC Self-Storage. Back in May, on May 10th, we presented in front of the BZA, requesting a use variance for this property. As everybody knows where that is, the northeast corner of Mirrorfield and 12th Street. It's the old Kroger building. They're proposing doing an indoor self-climate-controlled storage facility inside that existing building. So as discussed, there were some additional conditions put onto the property or onto the development of that site. One is to replat, rezone the facility to include outlawed. That's right along Mirrorfield for potential development into a restaurant kind of development. No real, no real opportunities there yet, but we're just going to set it up for that potential development on that site. So a lot of the conditions that were put on, the owner is good with that, developer is good with those resolutions, so.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Mamelanti?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just a quick question, how long has this building been vacant?
I could not tell you that.
Now, is there still plans to sell and operate firework distribution?
Yeah, so there are three owners of the, on that facility, on that lot. One is the pawn shop. The other one is the storage facility, and then the fireworks store. And so they're still planning to operate there, and I believe the owner of the fireworks store owns about 21% of the property. And then the LLC is the 79, 79% ownership.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Just curious about the access. Can you talk a little bit about access and security?
Security into the building?
Mm-hmm.
So they're going to be revising the front entrance to allow access there. I believe the hours are going to be like from 7:00 to 10:00 in the evening. No after-hours access to that, so it'll be controlled and based on keys and membership or rental of that property, so.
So there's just going to be a single entrance at the front of the building?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and not 24-hour access?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Bellovich?
I would welcome the new businessperson coming in, but I would hope that they would pave the parking lot. A small car could get lost in some of the holes that are out there in the parking lot right now.
Well, I believe one of the, some of the conditions of that site is that they need to look at the pavement, improve it, bring in new lighting for the site, you know, make it look better than it is right now, and then restry.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's condition number three.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Sir, just a couple of follow-up, and forgive my ignorance, but I don't have any firsthand experience with indoor climate-controlled storage. So what can you share with us with respect to some of the examples of the uses that would be made?
It's my understanding that the interior space will have lockers, will have storage units. So they're going to be renovating the inside of that facility, so you do have your individual locations. I don't know the dimensions, I don't know the sizes of those.
So it sounds like this won't be a facility where somebody brings an antique car to store it. It'll be a smaller use that they'll make of a smaller footprint within the building, or will it be larger items like?
Those are very good questions. That I'm not 100% on. And Ken, I don't know if you've had.
Mr. President, if I may?
Mr. Friends?
From our discussions at the hearing, it is only smaller items, that the drawer is not set up to have cars come through it.
That's what I suspected, but it never hurts to ask. As was indicated, I appreciate the commitment that your client has made to the conditions that are embedded within this use variance and the work that you've done with our staff to try to make this an upgrade for the neighborhood, if you will. If you could, please thank your client for their willingness to do that to this point, but certainly encourage them to be sensitive to the fact that this is in fairly close proximity to a neighborhood. And while this is promising that it's going to add to the quality of life in that area, certainly it'll always be important for them to be cognizant of that proximity to the neighborhood. So thank you for what they, thank them on our behalf for what they've done, and please encourage them to continue down the road in that spirit. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else present with us this evening who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone present this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating online who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
DeMaye?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Beneki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2022-11, a resolution of the Common Council, City of Mishawaka, Indiana, adding parcels to the city's property acquisition list associated with a previously approved Common Council Resolution 2022-07, which approved in order of the City of Mishawaka Plan Commission, approving a certain declaratory resolution, an amendment to the boundaries of the Northwest Area Improvement Project, consolidation of the South Side Economic Development Area, and the Northwest Improvement Project into one consolidated area improvement project, and an amendment to the Economic Development Plan for the Consolidated Area Improvements Project adopted by the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission. This is adding property to the city's acquisition list.
We will now open the public hearing of Proposed Resolution 2022-11. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward.
Mr. President, council members, Dave Wood, Mayor, here tonight to urge you to support Resolution 2022-11. This is a classic case that we call around here, addition by subtraction.
Thank you.
What do I mean by that? Well, we have shifted strategy a little bit, especially with the increased costs of doing massive projects and the uncertainty that is associated with that, the bidding process. We're now looking to do a little bit more property acquisition than we have done in the past. We've always been very aggressive about going after some of our blighted properties to bring them into, up to code and eliminate problems. But this is a notorious property. We all know it well, and so do our departments, I can promise you that. The Cam Island Hotel, as it was previously, had a history of being a nuisance for many decades and a tremendous draw on our city services. Tonight, you're going to hear from Chief Ken Witkowski, Chief of Department over at Mishawaka Police Department, who will outline some of our police issues we've had. You'll hear from Assistant Chief Dave Ray from the Mishawaka Fire Department, talking about their history. You'll hear from Joe Van Nevel from Code Enforcement. You'll hear from Bo Hunt, Building Commissioner, and you'll hear from Ken Prince, our Executive Director of Planning and Community Redevelopment. They will outline the issues we have had, specifically as it relates to public safety, code enforcement, and building. Perhaps they may even mention the time that we reported the previous owners to IDAM for piping raw sewage into the St. Joe River, among many other things. This property not only has been an inordinate draw on city surfaces, but it's also been problematic for surrounding neighbors and businesses. This is close to a neighborhood where several of our citizens live and have complained about this property over many, many years. It's important to keep that in mind. But the city has been interested in acquiring this property, but the circumstances were just never quite right. We'll address that tonight, too. So why now? We have been presented a unique opportunity to purchase and demo the property at a time when we are seeing tremendous growth momentum downtown and perhaps the best prospects we've seen in decades for improvement and redevelopment of the 100 Center itself. We are highly optimistic for the first time that the 100 Center could see significant redevelopment and add to the overall draw, not only for the neighborhood, for the downtown, but also for the region. Securing this property not only removes the blight and problems, but allows us to make important connections such as to, from the 100 Center to Cam Island Park, to the riverfront and the Riverwalk, making 100 Center redevelopment much more attractive as a prospect. So what if we don't act now? We strongly believe, very strongly believe, that if the building stays, it will never be anything more than it has been. And in fact, it could be worse. The fate of the 100 Center could very well depend on this vote tonight. If we act, we have an opportunity to change the character of this historic site and the neighborhood and further grow, growth of the downtown. With your support, we are acting decisively to deal with one of Mishawaka's, with your support, we acted very decisively to deal with one of Mishawaka's legacy projects here just recently, with the purchase of the former Dodge site. The result was that the public looked very favorably upon that recognition. We've heard a lot of that here recently. Tonight, we can act decisively to address the other legacy site in Mishawaka. And I strongly suspect that the public will look favorably upon this as well. Now is the time. It won't get any cheaper, and I'm sure that you're perfectly aware of what's going on in the real estate market these days. But I believe it's important to act now, and if we fail to act, I believe that history will judge us harshly. So I will have Chief Witkowski to come up.
Before we do that, why don't we take a pause and see if we have any questions from the council for Mayor Wood? I guess there are none, so we can proceed with Chief Witkowski. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members. Chief Witkowski, Mishawaka Police Department. I'd like to speak here in favor of this resolution. This has been an issue property, nuisance property, for the police department for years. I can, I mean, I've been in this role for 18 years, and I can remember back further than that when I worked the streets, making calls there. We never seemed to have cooperation from management. I remember domestic calls, shots fired calls, a lot of drug use type of things. We'd have outside agencies come for warrant service that we would have to help. And when you did get in, if you're able to get into a room for a warrant service occupancy, you know, I mean, normal room that size would have two, maybe three. I mean, there'd be five or six people in there. So living conditions were just atrocious. We've had shots fired calls down there, a lot of overdose, a lot of domestic type of issues. Actually, I just remember drug use, just filthy living conditions. Going back, clear back to 2008, we had 917 calls for service at that address. More recently, from 2018 to present, we had 277. So we've been there quite a many times, quite a lot. We've got to be familiar with that property. Just recently, two, three weeks ago, when I was just driving around the city, checking addresses, I drove down through there, and there's just a big pile of debris that someone dumped right in front of there. So now it's even more so being closed down, it's attracting just a dump site and issues that come with that type of building and non-management, because there's no one around, so. But I, for one, and I can speak entirely for the police department, we would like to see that building go for sure or not be reused as present.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mamelanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief, for your words and suggestions. Just a quick question regarding the number of calls that you suggested. Is that just Mishawaka police only? That doesn't include fire?
That does not include fire. That's just PD.
Just PD only?
Yeah. I mean, there's a couple in here maybe that we would help those guys out because, I mean, we're afraid to let the fire department go there by themselves.
Sure.
That's all. I mean, they would call us, you know, just to stand by if nothing else.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to hearing from Assistant Chief Ray as well for numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Beneki?
Yes, thank you. Chief, you said that with all these calls, my question would be, do you blame the tenant or do you blame management for not getting rid of the tenant?
I think it's a combination of both. I say, because every time, when I personally was there, management would not be cooperative at all. You know, we would get there on a call and try and rectify the situation, and management could care less. A lot of times, even to try and get into the room, and it was a domestic call where someone needed help. So there's a few times I think we So there's a few times I think we had to break in some doors.
So I mean, with, there is a possibility that with, with stern management, that them calls could be decreased even more?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Uh, Chief Ray, Chief Operations, uh, City Mishawaka Fire Department. I might put together a little, kind of like what, uh, Chief Witkowski did. So we're talking about Seven Fifty Island View. What I did was I ran about a five-year report from March sixth, or four of March of twenty sixteen to twenty-one July of twenty twenty-one, and that's when we quit going there pretty much because of, everybody was moved out, so. Uh, Seventy, Seven Fifty Island View is a twenty ninety thirty, thirty unit, three-story apartment building that sits behind the One Hundred Center Brewery Complex. In five years, we went there a hundred and thirty-three times. All right? A hundred and eight of those were EMS calls. So every EMS call, you're going to get an engine and a ambulance, which is, which is five to six people. If it's cardiac arrest or an overdose, you're going to get another truck with another three people. So that's three trucks out of our fleet, uh, for each, each one of those type calls. Fourteen fire responses, eight miscellaneous calls, and then three lift assists. The EMS calls consisted types included cardiac arrests, overdose, breathing problems, assaults, and messy, uh, many miscellaneous. All right? Many of those cardiac arrests and breathing calls were also drug-related overdoses. For me to break that down even farther, I would have had to have Chief Thomas read all a hundred and three reports to, to see, it depends on, my report is run off how dispatch sends them to us. So an overdose or anything like that, or an assault, uh, resulting in, you know, cardiac arrest would come into us as a cardiac arrest. Chief Witkowski was correct on a lot of those. We had the PD come with us just because of the area that we were responding to. This, the fire responses consisted of one structure fire, two electrical fires, one vehicle fire, smoke removals for many, uh, burnt hot dogs in the middle of the night, and, uh, many brush and trash fires around the facility. Actually, just that address. We had many, many small fires all around that neighborhood because of a resident that we're, we were investigating. But he had to move because of the, um, because of when everybody moved out, so he left that area. Um, he actually left the state, so. Uh, the miscellaneous calls considered, considered, consisted of nothing found, unseen, or disregards en route. Uh, the lift assist, uh, consists of a ladder company responding to help personnel who cannot move from one place to another. So that's a ladder truck going out and helping people get from one place wheelchair to a bed or something like that. When we talk about the fire responses, every time we had a fire response there or any type of fire response other than the vehicle fire and the brush fires, it's three-engine companies, two ladder companies, a rescue company, and medic, and then a, uh, battalion chief, and then usually one, one, two of the admin chiefs. So that's most of our, most of our city dumps out for something like that. All right? So what I did was I ran a comparison against a hundred and thirty-three calls in five years, and I thought I would do it against, um, the one hundreds, the One Hundred Center apartments, which are right there next to it. Those are fifty-four units. All right? Remember, the other ones were twenty-nine to thirty units. This is fifty-four units. I ran it from the same dates, four of March two thousand sixteen to twenty-one March, uh, of twenty-one, and I accidentally put seventeen in my report, but it was to twenty-one. Uh, we had forty calls of service for fifty-four units. These broke down to thirty-two EMS, all types. Two, two fire, which were only trash fires, rush fires, they were outside, that's one truck. Two gas leaks, two miscellaneous calls, which was a false alarm, and it canceled en route, and two lift assists. So, um, if we compared them, we did three times amount of calls on half the amount of apartments in the same area, in the same complex. I also broke it down, I did a, I didn't put it in this report. I looked at other apartment complexes in the city. I looked at, uh, West Jefferson Apartments. I did each building in West Jefferson Apartments because they're different addresses within there. Each one broke, if you did them all, it averaged out to about twelve calls per building, comparable size, in a five, five-year span. I did, uh, Parkview Terrace, same thing. And then if you go out to the bigger apartment complexes in the city, they just went down from there. All right? With many, many more apartments, but, uh, so that's, that's what we were breaking it down to. I also will add, you asked, uh, Chief Witkowski about, uh, management. My only, I, I, I don't really worry about the management or who's living there. What I look at is a firefighting problem. Uh, if you look at the map and see where it's situated, getting fire trucks back there, I don't know if all the council people have driven through there recently. Getting fire apparatus, apparatus back there has always been a problem. Getting, we're, the first thing we would want to do is get a ladder truck back there. Once we get a ladder truck back there, we can't get an engine company back there. They would be stacked up. We can only get to one side of the building out of four because the other two, the two sides on the ends have no windows. There's stairwells, and the backside has the channel. All right? So if somebody's stuck on the backside on their terrace, they can't get out, they have a fire in their apartment, their only hope is to jump in the channel. So added to our, our structure fire response, and now we gotta add a water, a water rescue response to that same apartment complex, which would entail probably having to bring South Bend over to help us to do that because we're all at the, fighting the fire. So, um, this building has always been, um, kind of a, a worry of mine personally, being the op, uh, Chief Operations, is that if, if we do have to fight a structure fire back there, we've had to fight them, but luckily they've been more room and contents since I've been here for thirty-two years, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Ray? Uh, Mr. Beneki?
Thank you, Chief. Kind of the same question as, as the police chief is, you know, if, if you had management in there to get rid of the, the drug users and, and the abusers, I mean, wouldn't that cut down on your calls quite a bit as well?
It would, it would, yeah, it would cut down on the overall calls. You can't say EMS really, depending on what age of people live there. If we look at our older, uh, some of our older places, we have some of our older people living. We go there a lot, so I wouldn't say it would cut down on EMS, it just depends. But on some of the other type calls, the drug-related calls, stuff like that, it definitely would. We still have the firefighting problem, but, um, the other one is, this was built to be a, a hotel in and out, and like Chief Witkowski said, they weren't built to be lived in, uh, on a long-term basis. They just, I don't know if you guys have ever been in those apartments? If you're going there in a two o'clock in the morning on a drug overdose, and you're on the third floor, it is a scary place to be. I'm telling you right now, I, I think, uh, Chief Hazen, or, uh, sorry, Councilman Hazen was there at one time. It really, uh, reminds me of the wooden Indian and what happened there with South Bend Police Department. It, um, it is, there is nowhere to go. If you have to exit quick out of one of those apartments, there is nowhere to go. And, uh, that is my big worry in, in what I have to worry about at work is when those, when my folks go up there and they have to enter those apartments. So if that got cleaned up, um, we still have the problem of the firefighting, but.
Well, let's say they put in a sprinkler system, things like that.
There are stand pipes in the building, uh, that run up, so we can run hoses off stand pipes, but they're usually full of syringes and, and other debris and all kinds of stuff like that.
But that could be cleaned up over time?
Hopefully, yeah. If you don't get vagrants down there, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Malenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily a question, more of a comment. Thank you, uh, Chief Ray, for your presentation. And just wanted to validate your point. I did a couple of years ago when I rode with, um, one of the shifts from Station, um, I think Station One. Um, one of the calls was down there, it was in the polar vortex, um, quite a bit of snow on the ground. The engine had extreme difficulty even getting down to that area, so I just wanted to validate your point. And we did have a, a call that we went into, um, one of the apartments, and, uh, it was, it was just as everyone described, so. Thank you for your illustrations and descriptions. Thank you.
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Chief, I'm glad that I, uh, you made the presentation and, um, went on to make comparisons to other apartment complexes because that was a question that I had, and I think it's very illustrative of the situation there. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hazen?
Wouldn't it be safe to say that if we voted yes tonight and got rid of this, you would sleep better at night knowing that your guys would not have to go there?
Every night. And then if we can just get the brewery building all put back together, that would make me even sleep better.
Thank you.
Well, Chief, I appreciate, we appreciate the deep dive into the data that you did. That was certainly very helpful in those comparisons to the other apartment complexes Mrs. Volker referenced. Certainly tell the story in and of itself almost. And you may not have, uh, this data at your fingertips, but if you think outside of the comparison to other apartment complexes and you just looked at other properties throughout the city over that same five-year period, would this still stand out as being a frequent source of, uh, calls and responses? Or does it look a little bit different when you compare it to just properties in general within the city of Mishawaka?
Well, no, I think the only pro- other properties that compare run volume are, are assisted living and our, you know, our, um, retirement-type places. And that is just because of the age of the people living there. We have a lot in Mishawaka.
It seems like it's generated by a whole different set of issues rather than what we're talking about with.
Exactly. But this, this type of, uh, dwelling here and these type of calls, I don't think, I can't think of any other place in the city of Mishawaka where we had this, you know, this many type, that, that same type of call in this, this type of, uh, structure.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward.
Honorable President, honorable members, I got mine I'm going to go ahead and hand out to you.
Got stats?
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. If you have an extra one.
Save us a little writing.
Debbie. Thank you.
Honorable President, honorable members of the council. I've gone back history to two thousand and five. And I've been with Code Enforcement since two thousand and thirteen. And since two thousand and thirteen, I spent a lot of time on this area. We've got nuisance cases and substandard cases. Nuisance cases are the grounds where stuff being dumped. Substandard cases are the structure or the apartments themselves. From two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen, cases were frequent. After two thousand eighteen, there were decline of tenants occupying apartments, uh, which were possibly caused by continuous issues with bedbugs. The substandard issues is the inside of the, uh, the apartment, and most of the substandard issues were bedbugs. Constant turnover at this place was tremendous. There was constantly during the week, during the month, there was always new tenants going in and out. And since two thousand and eighteen, what was happening is they were just closing down some of the apartments and not reopening some of the issues they were having, which would render, there was no issue with those apartments. So it started to decline after two thousand and eighteen somewhat. Nuisance cases dealt with trash, tall grass. There's a small corner area, there's a small parking lot, which really can't accommodate the people that are living there. It's a very, very small parking lot. And what you would find is vehicles being trashed there, uh, being left and abandoned and so forth. As far as the substandard issues, you had bedbugs. You also had some of the lighting issues with the, with the hallways, which they seem like they always had a hard time getting fixed. The issues would get rendered, but it seems like they would always come back up. Two thousand fifteen, we did have a serious issue. They had a, a tenant that called me and said that he was evicted, and he wanted to report that every time their toilets would overflow, it'd flow into the river. And I got many apartments, many departments involved in that, and it was actually happening. The building department was a big part of that. They were running off the, the runoff water for toilets when it'd overfill into, right into the creek. Okay? Into the river. Since then, uh, apartments have been empty. Now, a lot of nuisance activity has subsided, which includes small fires. Okay, the chief brought, brings up that, uh, Fire Department's put out some fires, and I'd have to say I've probably put out myself about twenty-five of them. After, and then I would report them, but I bet I put out twenty-five of those fires. Also scattered litter all over the area over the years. Code has had to dealt with, uh, items being dumped into the river. I think if that apartment was continually rented, I still think you would have that issue. I just don't see how that would go away. I don't know if you've been in any of these apartments, but they're very small. I mean, there's, you're not going to get anybody that wants, going to want to rent those apartments. And if you renovate them, how are you going to make them any bigger? So that's something to consider. Since, like I said, since it's been empty, I still go back there a lot. The Code has spent a lot of time over the years, um, since two thousand thirteen, since I've been here. That's probably the number one property as far as keeping an eye on. I'm back there all the time. Now, it's kind of subsided, the dumping's kind of slowed down, the graffiti's kind of slowed down. There's still some dumping going on, but we continually, with the help of Fire Department, Police Department, we're constantly monitoring that area, but the activity is just gone away from there, so the dumping's not going on. But the fire issue, I don't know where it was originating from, but it was supposed to be somebody from that complex, but they were constantly happening. There was items being dumped, and then the items were being caught on fire. Graffiti has been an issue over the years. That's seen subsided, but this is an area that, over the years, I probably average down to seven or eight times a week. And I think if you get rid of that apartment complex, you're going to eliminate people, activity down in that backside. I, I just don't know who would want to rent something that small back there. It's very tiny, and the parking is just not accommodating to that apartment complex. I would like to see it go, and I, I think it would take away a lot of the man-hours that Code has spent over the years on that complex. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Nevel? Mr. Council?
Mr. Van Nevel, thank you very much. Appreciate the work you do. Did you cite the owner of this complex and fine them, uh, for, for these violations?
There was, there's been a few small citations, but not many. Usually, they would, over time, after I'd get to the citation warning, they would get it taken care of, either get rid of the tenant, or they would get it, it taken care of. Now, the bedbug issue seemed like it never really went away. They would get rid of it, and it would come back. But I'd never really actually cited them for bedbugs, no.
Do you know if the, the fines were paid?
I do not know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Beneki?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Nevel. Bedbugs. How do you know they had bud, big bu- bedbugs? Were that, was it complaint-driven, or did you go and inspect?
It was complaint-driven. It was mainly complaint-driven, and then, um, they would actually sometimes come out of the apartment and show us. I wouldn't go in, but they would show us. And I know Art Vark was treating them over the years, and they even commented that they would get rid of them, and then they'd come back, and it was due to basically the turnover that they had in the apartment complex. They constantly knew people coming in and out, because a lot of the times bedbugs come in through bedding. But it seemed like it'd be handled, and then it would come back because of the turnover they would have in the apartment complex.
So if you, if you really had a little bit better, cleaner facility with, uh, a, a, a more clean type person, you, you may not have that problem.
Yeah.
So, I mean, them things can be cleaned up, and I know there's other, uh, hotels, motels in the area that have had them issues as well. Would that be true?
They've had some issues, but I've never had these kind of issues that I've had here at this complex.
And then as far as the, the parking, I mean, I think what we're trying to do, some of the things downtown is, you know, we want to make it so that you walk places and bike places, so not everybody necessarily has a car. And there's some, uh, some of these new apartments in the county that they never have enough parking. It doesn't matter how many you have. So I, I appreciate, appreciate your work. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Van Nevel? Thank you again for the information that you provided. I'm going to ask you a somewhat similar question to the question I posed to Chief Ray and that I wish I would have posed to Chief Witkowski. Can, can you put this in context of the problem properties that you and your staff deal with? Where does this rank, if it's possible, to, to speak about that type of comparison?
I, I think the other one that would probably rank a little bit would be maybe the Mishawaka Inn that's on Lincoln Way. Uh, we don't get nearly as many complaints, but we do get complaints of bedbugs at that facility. That would probably be comparable, would be the one on Lincoln Way, Mishawaka Inn.
But is it fair to say that even beyond apartment complexes, hotels, motels, that this is a property that is a?
As far as hotels go, I don't get, I don't get that many. I've had a few bedbug issues on some of the hotels, but not very many from hotels of comparable size.
Let me try to ask the question a different way. Are there other buildings, both commercial and residential, where over the course of time, there have been more than forty-four nuisance visits and forty-four, forty-eight substandard cases?
I can't think of anybody that's comparable to that.
Okay. That was the answer I was looking for. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Van Nevel? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Mr. President, councilmembers, Bo Hunt, building commissioner, City of Mishawaka. Um, I usually get called in at the very last, uh, time when all these, uh, other departments are out there doing their job and service. There was, uh, two in particular, the sewage incidents, of course, uh, that everybody's talked about. I was called out after it was discovered that sewage was being distributed into the ditch area of the creek there. Um, I did go into the building, got access from the ditch, the creek area, actually had to walk through, had waiters on, of course. Uh, but did walk through, walk under the building. There was a plumbing contractor out there, and there was actually a pipe that was being drained directly into the river, and it was a backflow. Uh, basically, instead of a preventer, it was an inhibitor to allow the backflow all to go into the sewage to go straight into the river. Uh, we did have it capped, have that cut, and have that capped at that time. Um, it was reported to IDEM, not, my understanding, IDEM took care of it from that point forward, which our hands were off at that time. Uh, second incident was just recently, last year, with the, um, uh, electrical, uh, box that, uh, caught on fire out at the complex. Uh, I was called out to make sure that everything was taken care of. Reconnections was done, and done properly, and making sure that the, uh, building was, um, secure as in electrical services were to the building. Uh, just like a residential or commercial place, if a power goes out, generators are able to be used for a certain period of time temporarily, which was done out there. But of course, they weren't done completely proper with being hooked up to battery, um, of cars and stuff like that, which me and the fire marshal, uh, were out there and made sure that those were disconnected. Uh, but they did have some generators that were running. Uh, power was restored in a proper amount of time, uh, to get that building back, uh, with the electrical service. Uh, I think one of the biggest things, um, for this building is the life, uh, safety, uh, measures for building and fire codes. Uh, me and the fire marshal worked directly with the fire codes and building codes on apartment buildings for safety of the residents in those buildings. If you look at a lot of our apartments that are up north, the fire codes are more up-to-date with those apartments, and every time we have a fire, lives are saved because of that. This is built before major building and fire codes were brought about. As, um, they talked about, as fire talked about, the access to this building, being able to get their trucks around and getting full coverage of this building isn't proper, and that would be not allowed to be built with the current building and fire codes at this time. So I think that's one of the biggest issues that we have from building and fire, is the life safety of this building, um, if it was to continue as is. So, at that time, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Uh, just the question, I know back in June of two thousand and twenty-one, when this was all going on, you said that you had the bottom of month, and you were condemning the building. Has the building been condemned?
Condemned for use.
Okay.
That's it. Just to use the building. No. When, once electrical, that's only for the electrical aspect. So as we're gonna condemn it from use if the electric wasn't brought up and, and resurfaced.
Okay, so I mean, if, if they wanted, they could really put a little shoe polish on this today and open it up tomorrow.
Yeah, yes and no. Life safety, it would still have to be in place. They'd still have to do walkthroughs with building and fire to make sure that everything is brought up to code.
Sure.
For existing code from the time it was built. So there would still be, like, they can't have open wires, they can't have open plumbing, things of that nature. Now, we can't force upon them firewall, smoke walls, uh, sprinkler systems, things of that nature, but we can make sure that life safety stuff is brought up because of when the building was built.
So it's a wilting flower. If we water it, it may grow.
I, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Hunt? Well, again, thank you for the information. We appreciate it. Um, and I know you haven't talked about, you know, statistics and, uh, you know, flat dab comparison to other properties, but when you, and, and I appreciate the concerns that you've articulated with regard to this property. Um, and I know you take that seriously. So when you compare and contrast the concerns that you have with regard to this property with other problem properties that are out there in the community, where does this rank in terms of what keeps you up at night and worries you about potential problems?
By far, because of the, the coverage, the where it's located, um, just the ability to get access to it, the ability of people, if something was to happen, uh, life safety as a fire, um, the lives that could, could possibly not be saved because of the location of it, um, on the river and hidden back in there, and plus just the way it's been, it was built. Yeah. It's probably the top of my list by far. Yeah.
And I appreciate the, also, uh, we appreciate the information that you provided with regard to the events of last summer that, um, you know, we were all aware of. What I took from your comments is that, from your perspective as a representative of, uh, the city, that there was appropriate interaction, follow-up, uh, with those issues on the part of the management, um, of the building, the owners of the building. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we, I get involved with the contractors is where I try to stay involved with. Um, and so that's where most of my contact was going through, was through them. Um, and so they got the certain amount of time through the contractor, and then they were notified, as management was notified at that time, that they had, uh, a certain amount of time to get that electric fixed at that time. And it was done within, uh, reason. I got the permit, was pulled by licensed contractor, inspection was done, inspection was passed.
Is it fair to say, then, that those disturbing images that we all saw of people who were running electrical cords from those car batteries to their apartment that, that you referenced, that that was a function of the individual choice of the individuals rather than taking advantage of the opportunity to use a generator?
Correct, correct, 'cause they could use a generator, and they could use an outside generator, just a gas one, but it had to be outside. We did find one that was inside the building. We informed them to put it outside the building for the venting. But yes, the car battery was a single incident that was taken care of, yes.
Thank you. Other questions, Mr. Memelante?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize. This question just kind of popped up. Um, thank you, Mr. Hunt, and you may or may not have the answer to this, and somebody may in the, in the audience as well. Yeah, how many residents were, were living there when the power went out?
I don't know the exact ans- answer, but I believe.
How many units were occupied?
Units that were, Joe, do you remember?
I think there was thirteen units that were occupied. I don't know the number of residents, but I think there was thirteen units that were occupied at that time.
And do we know, have, have they all been relocated and found, rehoused?
As far as I know, the building is empty with no residents at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Bo. You may not know the answer to this either. Um, Chief Ray mentioned that the apartments were very, very small. Can you tell me what the square footage of the apartments are?
I don't know the exact square footage of the apartments. I would, if I were to guess, they were, be, um, I, I, I can't even guess offhand, yeah.
More like a motel room. Yeah, it's more like a motel room.
Yeah.
Five hundred max, yeah. I, and I don't even think it's five. I won't, I was gonna say five hundred off the get, but I don't think it was five hundred. I think they're more like four, four-twenty-five, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Hunt? Thank you, Bo.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution?
Mr. President, members of council, uh, Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development for the city. Um, I, first, I wanna comment that, um, Mr. Hazen, nobody's ever asked me why I'd lose sleep at night. I just wanna say that for the record.
You don't sleep, so I wouldn't ask you that question.
The bags under the eyes. Um, the other thing I'll state is that we look at this property as that important, where normally I try to give you a sufficient amount of detail to make a decision, and this, tonight, I think I'm gonna go a little overkill. And I apologize for being long, um, this evening. But I, we were asked a number of questions on this property that we weren't typically asked, and I feel like there's an obligation to provide you as many answers and information that we can, so I'll just start at the beginning. The big, uh, question that I was asked at the very beginning is the purchase price. So I know the council's aware, but for the public, every property that we buy, we are required to obtain two independent appraisals of the property before we make an offer of purchase. So in this case, we made the offer to purchase of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars based on the average of the two appraisals that we received for the property. So, moving on from that, um, I will say that, and for those of you that follow the work that we do in redevelopment, um, the redevelopment commission, we go through our TIF priorities and cash flow expenditures. Um, and we try to do it on a yearly basis. We're gonna be doing it again in May, but we hadn't done it since December. But even in December of two thousand and twenty, uh, when we had done it, we had allocated a million dollars for property acquisition of a hundred center. Without, of course, any explanation, we have to keep those in private, but this has been envisioned for a long time. Um, it goes back to when Mayor Ray, um, and I, uh, we had looked at this property, and I had stated this, I believe, in the email, but when we looked at this property, at that point in time, our hope was, um, because the asking price was well over a half-million dollars at that time, this is twenty years ago, we're here like, for this? Really? Like, it, we were just shocked, and in hindsight, um, boy, that would've been money well spent if we were to have done it at that point in time just to get rid of the nuisance and what you've heard here this evening. That could've all been prevented if we had pulled the trigger and we had brought it before the council, and we were given the blessing to do it. Uh, we chose at that point in time not to do that. Um, well, at least I'm back. Um, and we're not gonna make that mistake twice. We're at least gonna give you the option to, to approve that. So according, the other thing that we were asked, and we're not normally asked this, we made this offer in, in good faith to the current owner without researching, understanding any of the bills, any of the purchase price that they made for the property. But when we were asked regarding, well, what did they pay for the property? We went back to the owner's representative and asked them what they have in the property. So what they had indicated is, um, they purchased it for six hundred and ninety-five thousand. They invested over a hundred and fifty thousand into the property. That includes the electrical repairs, the taxes, um, the cost of relocating the tenants that, um, that they did so. Um, uh, and during that time, they just received five thousand dollars in rent on that property. So when you look at the total and you add those ups, that, that means, as of today, they have eight hundred and forty thousand dollars into the property, and our offer is eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred. So at that little over twenty thousand dollars, that represents a two-point-six percent difference. And also, again, without any of the time that they have from a management perspective into the property. So by every stretch of the imagination, I believe, they are not making money on this property. They are perhaps be getting a hole, but not making money on the property. That's, um, my impression, but that, those are the numbers that we have. Um, I was asked why we did not pursue the property when it was listed for sale for a million dollars through a realtor. Um, and the answer is simply the way government has to go about our business about buying property. So we can have those discussions, but typically when the city comes asking, um, are the, I don't know why this happens, but the price goes up. Um, somehow the, the, the general perception is the city has the money, the city can do it, and I, and I don't wanna mention names, but, um, we were looking to buy a dilapidated property just recently. Um, the end, the person that, that bought the property, uh, you know, that wasn't listed for sale, we didn't have an opportunity to buy it, but they bought it for twenty thousand dollars. They wanted us to buy it for fifty and give them a tax abatement on another piece of property. And we just said, no, no, thank you. But that gives you an idea of what we deal with as a city in terms of the etiquette of buying property and selling property. The, um, other thing that we do on every, um, free will buy and sell agreement is we require that that property be completely vacant with no lease interest in the property when we acquire it. So that's part of our buy-sell agreement, and that's very important, 'cause we're held to a different standard. If we were to buy property, and there would be somebody living in that property, we would be completely responsible for them finding them that, that new home. So that is a critical aspect on every property that we buy. We have that in the agreement. And the only exception is when we condemn property. When we condemn property, we are required to pay that relocation. And we went through that process just recently, last year on Hill Street. So on Hill Street, for the widening, we approached the property owners, um, and this is all, um, none of it went to court. One of them went to arbitration, but just the cost of relocating, this is hiring the attorney, hiring the relocation specialist, um, for each unit was between twenty and thirty thousand dollars to relocate each one of them. And the majority of that didn't go to the person that was living there. It went through the process of paying for the people necessary to relocate them. It is a very expensive and time-consuming endeavor to do it that way. The other thing, and I think the most important aspect here in the hotel, is we never were talking about eminent domain. This is a redevelopment project, and we very specifically by law can't use eminent domain for a redevelopment project. We can't go and buy your property and then sell it to somebody else or redevelop it unless we have a public use for the property. And in this case, we're not putting a road through it, we're not doing a drainage project, we're not, um, doing anything that really would require eminent domain going through it, so it has to be a free will arrangement.
So Prince, if I can be so rude as to interrupt?
Sure.
I sense that a member of the fourth estate would like to retrieve his electronic apparatus from the podium at, at the risk of interrupting your flow.
See, all it took was, you know, the, 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 me talking. Note, note in the future.
Thank you.
Yep. So in any event, if we were to go, have gone through the eminent domain process on a project like that, even though legally we couldn't have, this would've been hundreds of thousands of dollars in addition. So when you think about the, the price of buying property, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. Um, as Mayor would mentioned, um, why now? Um, because it's not gonna get easier, it's not gonna get cheaper, the same way we bring every other similar property like this. They're different when we talk about Dodge. Um, and a million dollars, when we talk about the acquisition and demolition of this property, is a large investment, but I equate it to the Dodge property in terms of the legacy cost being borne by the city. In that case, the acquisition was only two hundred and fifty thousand, but the reinvestment is thirteen million. So when you look at it proportionally, um, this is one of those legacy properties that we are, at this point, um, need to deal with. The other thing we were asked differently on this property, um, compared to any other property, was our relationship between the city and the developer. I think it's very important to note that, um, until the buy-sell agreement was reached, um, with the owner's representative, there was no relationship, no agreement, no nothing between, um, the seller and the city. So when this, um, this again goes back to Mayor Ray. We've said to numerous people of our interest in buying this property and getting rid of this property, um, over that period of time. So our contact with the current owner's represented, real representative happened years ago. They have other real estate interests down there, and we basically made the comment, wouldn't it be great to get rid of that piece of property? And to put it in perspective of how redevelopment efforts in the city, you know, you, you think we're out there pounding doors down, we're not. Um, in terms of our staff, we communicate, so when people come in, um, whether it's an existing owner, whether it's a real estate developer, uh, we have these conversations with them constantly, and usually they never come to light, but let me give you a few. So Family Express, when they came down on Bremen Highway, um, uh, Union Street, they very specifically were having issues, like, we wanna build a station here, and we were here like, well, we'd really love to get rid of the Blair Hills, Mark, but we aren't gonna condemn that property. And so ultimately, we reached an arrangement where they did the lifting in terms of contacting the property owner, working through, um, the obligation of buying it, and then we reimbursed them through the purchase of property that we need for the road widening as part of that. Um, th- this happens, um, all, all the time. When I look at Center for Hospice, we wanted to get, um, behind where the Moose Lodge was and get it up to the city, and we proposed, hey, why don't you talk to these property owners down here and see if you can assemble property? We didn't assemble their property. The, the business sent, assembled the property, and then we bought the property for the Riverwalk that extended to Cedar Street. That's just how it works. And to give you an example where it didn't work, um, not that I like doing this, I won't give you any more examples, but I'll give you one. So the Seven-Eleven at Main Street and Mishawaka Avenue, when the River Rock Apartment Building was built, we knew they would have space in there, 'cause we knew we weren't ever gonna get rid of the Seven-Eleven. It's in, it's not owned locally, it's owned out. Um, but we're here like, boy, wouldn't it be great to have the convenience store in the building where your commercial space is? And have more room for outside, um, and do streetscape through here and make it look good? Um, we could never get a response, and that's an incidence where, you know, we had a great idea, and it just doesn't pan out. Um, and there's a lot of those that, that go around, but this is how our property acquisition process works and how ultimately this came from, uh, the current owner, then to the city, so. Um, the next issue that was brought up was low-income housing, regarding, there's nothing wrong with low-income housing, we should provide for it. And as a city, we completely agree with that. Um, low-income housing. Low-income housing options are important to our city and we invest in them. So when you think of the city and just our housing stock was essentially developed as workforce housing. Most of the older housing downtown, when you think of the Uniroils and the Dodges and the Bendix of the world, most of our housing was developed as workforce housing. A number of those houses we're still dealing with in terms of how they were cut up into apartments to serve it. So the majority, when you look at our housing, is affordable housing, but we're not just talking about affordable housing. And particularly in today's market gone crazy, I mean, you don't have to lecture me on that. I get that as well in terms of what a house actually costs these days. But we're talking about a situation where somebody working a job can't afford the rent, or maybe they have a disability. And there are different programs that deal with that. When you look at the Mishawaka Housing Authority, we partnered with them with Mary Fields Apartments. We partnered and spent millions of taxpayer dollars to do the main junior high apartments. These are both low-income projects. Tom Bradimus, when he developed, I believe, the Hundred Center Apartments that were mentioned by Chief Ray, is an apartment complex that is income qualified. You have to be of a certain income to get in there. The 500 high-rise, the Hundred Center high-rise apartments, that senior housing there is also income qualified. You have to be below a certain level to get in there. We have a current diversity of housing in the city, and what we've argued is where is it appropriate to have that housing? So if we're looking for diversity in terms of low income and high income, the most valuable property we have happens to be along the river and along the park system. And that, so when we look at it, it's not that we are opposed at all to low-income housing, we've invested in it. You look at Habitat for Humanity and the partnership that we have there, we continue to invest in low-income housing. I would just argue that this isn't the place for it. So if we're going to make the investment, it shouldn't be here. All right. So the difference between the projects that I mentioned and the Camp Island Apartments are night and day. So in terms of when you talk about low-income apartments, and I guess this goes to the whole motel converted into apartment situation, and we're arguing over the square footage. But the reality is, is that these are a motel room, when you think of a standard motel room, whatever square footage it is, you think of maybe two full-size beds in a room. They have a converted kitchenette and they have a bathroom. This is, this is what they have in there, and as you heard from the chief, potentially with five or six people that are living in it. These are substandard units that wouldn't be fit for what they're currently being used for. They're also not managed by a company or an entity that specializes in providing that service. So when you think of low income, when you think of the housing authority, they have access to programs specifically for low-income people to provide them the services they need. In this case, it was just a financial endeavor. And the entity, I would argue, not that anybody's just in it for the money, but they were ill-equipped to deal with the problems. And that's evident by the number of police calls that we had, the number of fire calls that we had. So that's just the nature of what was being constructed. And the other component to consider, and I know this is more of a zoning issue and not a property acquisition issue, but is to consider the highest and best use of the property. In this case, the highest and best use of the property, we would argue, would be to maximize the potential for the redevelopment of the Hundred Center. And I think with the acquisition of the property, we'll do that. And I'll explain that a little bit in terms of redevelopment in just a second. So redevelopment, why do we want the property? The building essentially is an obstacle to what we'd like to do. So the property location is wonderful, but if the free market were going to deal with this, so when we talk about somebody turning on the lights and rerunning it, if the free market was going to deal with the overall Hundred Center, it would have happened by now. We try to reserve the investments of significance, like the city is looking to make here, for the properties that aren't going to be handled in another way. And the reality is, is we've seen the Hundred Center over the last 10 years further degrade to the point now where Indiana State Landmarks has it listed as one of their 10 most endangered structures. And in part, it's because of the activity that was occurring at these apartments. So how do we get beyond that? So I need to, sorry, I've got a number of notes here and I got to ramble around a little bit. So first, let's look at the packet that was handed out. You can see on the sheet here. The hotel property was actually developed some 50 years ago, but was outside of our current floodplain standards. So when you look at the floodplain, that's the Hundred Center, that's the Camp Island Apartments. You can see right in the middle of where that hatched area is. And that's not to say that the apartments themselves would be underwater, but that indicates where that floodplain exists relative to the property. And their mapping is not perfect, but when we talk about being built directly on top of the water, and when we talk about things like the sewage that don't happen on other properties, part of the reason for that is exactly where it was built on the edge of that floodplain. So we also know that it was sandwiched behind. This was an afterthought. So there's a good view of the apartments themselves. This is behind how it was actually built onto the raceway. You can see the concrete wall. It no longer has an embankment, it literally projects right over the raceway. And I call this one the motel alley. But this shows you where that fire truck was getting stuck and having trouble getting through. So not only is it a fundamental issue of getting through there, but it's also a problem from a redevelopment initiative. So if you can imagine, historically, the Cam Chilier Brewery is, that complex of buildings was industrial, and as we know, when they were developed, they didn't look at the river for aesthetics, they didn't look at it for value that way, they looked at it from a transportation and a place to dump. And now, as we know with the Uniroil properties and the redevelopment, that's some of the most valuable property that we have. And you look right between where that brewery is in terms of value and where the motel, the apartments are located, that's the obstacle. That's the obstacle between adding value to the Hundred Center, aiding in the redevelopment of the site, getting rid of these non-conforming situations or not, is that hotel property. And I put this picture in just for comparison. So when we think about the redevelopment of the property, and Mr. Benicki, I think you make a valid point regarding that, yes, somebody could walk into the existing apartment building and turn on the lights and with minimal investment, start renting it again. And I think that's one of the fears that we have, is somebody would actually do that, right? Because of the nature of it, it's not suited for those converted hotel rooms were never meant to be apartments and don't serve us the way that they should. It doesn't provide value to the property. And so I, let me put it in different terms. So I know your business. What you're looking at in car terms, in terms of the brewery, is a 65 Mustang fastback. It needs work. But at the end of the day, when you reinvest it, you have a 65 Mustang fastback. Let me show you a 74 Pinto. At the end of the day, you can spend millions of dollars, in this case, or I realize it's more than a car, and you're still going to have a 74 Pinto. So you have, in terms of the investment in the property, the Mishawaka Camp Chilier Brewery is rated outstanding in our Historic Sites Instructions Structures Inventory. It was built in the late 1800s. That outstanding rating, it tells you you have something there. At a very minimum, you have something there. Here you have cinder block walls, you have rotting wood in terms of the railings. You can continue to invest money into it, but at the end of the day, you still have a 74 Pinto. And that's why we want to get rid of it. The non-conforming situations. If there was another way, we probably would have looked at it, we would have considered it, but at this point, we are at a point where the best thing is to get rid of it. And to that end, I'll show you the and I don't normally do this because I get held to things that I shouldn't get held to, but I think it'll illustrate my point here. So if you turn to the concept redevelopment plan that's in your packet, let me show you what it does. So remember, when we planned the Uniroil properties, we said that we wanted architecturally significant, we wanted pedestrian-friendly, and we wanted mixed use. Well, when you look at the, one, we know it's not architecturally significant. In terms of pedestrian-friendly, this hotel or this apartment building specifically gets in the way of making the whole Hundred Center pedestrian-friendly. So the dotted lines that you see are showing connections from the parking lots into the back, connecting it to the river. And in this diagram, and I know it's difficult for the public to see, but on either end of the brewery complex, I've highlighted an area of existing parking that can be reconfigured to allow for the fire truck to be able to turn around in that area. So it will not be a dead end, so they can get in there and they can pull the hose necessary to service it. The dotted line represents a multi-use walk that can go through there. So even if you had a bad fire that you had to get a truck back there, the only thing that would get back there would be the fire truck. It wouldn't be accessed by other vehicles that you could get to. Also, the bridge connection, when you think of the area and the potential of this, so you have the beautiful facade of the Hundred Center Brewery complex, and then behind it, you have an unrealized potential of outside event space. Whether it's going to be a party, a gathering space, but either way, you're using the amenity of the river and the park in order to aid in the redevelopment of the property. And that only happens with that hotel property, that apartment property being gone. So and, and the other significant limiting factor that you have down here, and just to put it in perspective, you don't want parking to dictate everything, but parking does dictate something. So in this case, you have roughly 120 parking spaces that kind of serve this main brewery complex. To give you in comparison, the Applebee's at Main Street University has about 120 parking spaces to it. That building on University and Main is 5,000 square feet. The brewery complex itself is about 100,000 square feet. So when you look at acquiring the property that has the designated parking for the hotel, it aids in the redevelopment of the Hundred Center Brewery complex by providing that additional parking that's going to be needed for any meaningful event. And that doesn't mean that parking is a limitation. If you look like an, if an antique mall goes in here, you don't need a restaurant is a very intense use, whereas antique mall would be a very low intense use. So the developer, whoever ultimately ends up developing it, has the ability to make those choices on how the property is developed. So it might be one restaurant and event space that goes into this building instead of multiple ones because of the demand for parking. All I can tell you is the demand for parking is real, and the acquisition of the hotel aids in the redevelopment of the property. If you recall from previous presentations, we talked at one point in time of can we build a parking garage-type structure, a stable structure in the middle where the hacienda parking lot is? And the trouble with that is, one, it's very expensive. And secondly, it's not very efficient in terms of providing parking there. This is the most economical way that we can provide meaningful help in terms of the overall redevelopment of the Hundred Center. The other thing that I'll say is that, and I hate to use this term in terms of leverage, but it's leverage, right? So we want to see this to be restored to somehow its former glory. We want it to be a destination. We want this to be part of the overall city moving forward. And one way to do it is to have skin in the game. And the acquisition of this property gives us skin in the game, which equates to control and how the overall brewery building is going to be redeveloped. So for those reasons, we're asking for your consideration of adding it to the acquisition list. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Prince, Mrs. DeMay?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Prince, if the sale this evening goes through, can you tell us when this building might be raised?
I would hope this fall.
Thank you.
Mr. Hazen?
So if we bought for 500,000 and there was what, 30 to 45 people living there, what would have that cost us to replace?
One, we would have never got into that situation because we would have never been able to condemn it because we wouldn't have a legitimate reason to condemn it. So but if we were to put a road through and that was the public use that demanded it, I would imagine it would be 20 or 30,000 dollars per unit in addition to the acquisition cost. Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Prince?
When that facility was built way back, it was a nice facility and it served a purpose because of the redevelopment down there of One Hennep Center. And those apartments or hotel rooms were very small. Like you said, a bedroom, a bath, and just a very small area for a kitchenette. So isn't city code, or is their code would stipulate what amount of space you could have to rent out an apartment? When you make it take a hotel or a motel, which is a very small quarters, and turn that into apartments? I mean, with the parking, with the access, fire codes, everything else, why was that allowed?
So there's multiple facets to your question. So first, understand that when the building was developed, a lot of our current codes didn't exist. So it's grandfathered on multiple levels. The second regarding the occupancy is really a Bo question, not a Ken question regarding the building code. So from a zoning perspective, the apartments and the motel are both permitted uses in the district. They would have no requirement to come before us because of that change in use occupancy for it. So I'd refer to Bo on the conversion.
Okay, and one other question. What's the acreage that that apartment complex sets on? You don't have to be exact, Ken.
I'm guessing an acre and a half, but I don't know that.
Okay, get an idea. Okay, say an acre and a half?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Compton?
Mr. Prince, thank you for the detailed report. Couple of questions.
Point seven-seven, I was way off.
Pardon?
Three-quarters of an acre. I understand that if the city were to take over that property to relocate people, that we would take the responsibility to do that, and it would cost us. But the private owner, it's just eviction notices, there's no relocation fees, I mean, they're not required to do anything like that, is that correct?
I, I think it depends on the context. I know with, and this would be better addressed to somebody else, but I know particularly with COVID, that you weren't legally allowed to evict people, so I know there were finances involved in terms of paying people to
Okay, that, I would agree with that. During COVID was an exceptional time. The value of the property of 800
Sixty-two-five.
How? What do they base that on? I mean, we look in at a building that has really not much use of anything. Three-quarters of an acre on the river, I give you that. But I don't see 800,000 dollars worth of value here.
I, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Compton. I think it goes back to the discussion I have with Jeff Ray 20 years ago. We looked at the property and said, boy, this isn't worth it. And now we turn based on the history of the property, the use of the property, we think it's well worth it. So in terms of the physical investment, going back to my 74 Pinto, you don't want a 74 Pinto, but you don't want anybody to die in it either. And that's why we want to acquire it, is to get rid of that nuisance. So
I don't mind buying a 74 Pinto, but I don't want to pay the 65 Mustang finished price. That's, to me, that's what we're doing here.
So, so we by law have to get two independent appraisals of the property. How they determine the value is they look at the comps. And you know right now, in terms of the the residential market and what even bad apartments are renting for, and you multiply that by the 28 units or whatever it is through there. So let's say it's 500 dollars a month, that's 14,000 dollars a month, the potential revenue that's coming in from these substandard apartments that somebody is using, that's what's justifying the cost. And also being located along the river. So they do a value approach, they do an income approach when they look at it. So the appraisals that I sent you have that information in it, in terms of the comps that they use to provide the value as well as the income approach, and that's how they determine the value. Do I think it's too much? Yes. Should we pay it? Our opinion is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Prince. Mr. Benicki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Prince, a couple of things. First of all, I would have bought a Pinto back in the day. We probably sold more Pintos in the country versus Mustangs. I mean, people just bought them.
And how many are around today?
Not many. But, well, there's a few more Mustangs, but that's because they were more money. But anyway.
My point exactly.
So should we, should we do this before the 100 Center deal is done? Because maybe they may have interest in them apartments or a hotel back there to Because maybe they may have interest in them apartments or a hotel back there to help bring people in. I mean, is that a possibility?
No, I understand your point. I think our opinion is that acquiring it now and tearing it down now prevents it from ever going back to into that apartment. And also gives us the leverage in terms of, I mean, at the last minute, and we don't have any leverage, it'll be the developer telling us, well, this is how this is going to be, and we may not like it, and we're not going to have any say in it. This gives us a say in what happens down there.
Okay, and by tearing them down, it doesn't guarantee that anything will happen in 100 Center. I mean, that deal could fall through and.
It could catch fire tomorrow. I hope that doesn't happen, but yes, it could go away tomorrow. And at that point in time, we still have river frontage, and we still have a piece of property that somebody's going to have to talk to us regarding.
Well, we'd have a lot more parking spaces.
Okay. We have to have a reason to park there, though.
Yeah, well, if you got the apartments, then you would have it. Anyway, one of the appraisers said that highest and best use as vacant property, from a fiscal standpoint, the subject is located in a flood zone, and therefore has some building limitations. According to soil maps, whatever is built should have a slab foundation and the load limitations would prohibit construction on a high-rise building. The subject is legally zoned for hotels and multifamily residential apartments. Due to the high demand for multifamily residential apartments in the subject's area, the most financially feasible and most maximally productive, highest and best use as a development site is as a multifamily residential apartment use. And that's in the appraisal.
That is in the appraisal to determine value, which is why we're paying the finished Ford Mustang prices for a Pinto. It's not, it's not, it's not, I can tell you, it's not from a planning, it's not from a redevelopment standpoint, and it's not in the best interest of the city.
Well, is that the best use of the property?
It's the highest value use of the property.
Right.
But it's, but it's not, the highest value and best are two different terms.
So that's where the value is as it is, because otherwise, if you look at just the value of the property itself is, land only is about 302,000 valuation. So, I mean, I don't know. It's just, it's a tough call. I don't know that they're at end of life. You know, I see a lot of people staying at different places, you know, whether it's daily, weekly, monthly, whatever, you know, and the man that ran them before had a business model, and his business model must have worked for a long period of time because he was there for a long period of time. The apartments were for sale for quite some time. I mean, it's been through different realtors. You know, 2018, it was for sale, 2020 was for sale. So it's been for sale quite a few different times. And I would think that if somebody's going to buy it, they would have a game plan for that. And if the game plan were to fix them up, then that's what it should have been. It seems like this thing was purchased to shut down to sell. And, and I just don't know, it just doesn't pass the smell test for me. But I appreciate all the hard work, and I appreciate all the departments that's been there. I don't know that I can support it. Under different circumstances, it might be different, but I don't know. With so many people looking for housing right now, it's, you know, we spent a lot of seed money tearing down Uniroil and getting that built up, and we keep doing things, but we keep throwing money at it when people, individuals should want to throw money at it to up their portfolios.
I, I understand your point. I will say, and I'll use the Flaherty Collins folks as an example. So the only way the mill worked was with a significant subsidy because of the parking garage component. As a significant expense that it brings to it when they look at Phase Two, they're receiving over 6 million dollars from the state in addition to what they're expecting from the city, and their own, you know, 40 million dollar investment in order to put additional apartments down there. That's what things cost. And I don't know what, I mean, there's a whole lot of people that have money, not just the city, in trying to achieve what we believe to be a destination quality of life project. And this along the river, we can't remanufacture the history that's down here. I mean, if this were on, down on 12th Street, Councilman, we would not be talking about this.
Sure.
This is because it's river frontage, because of the history here, and because of the non-conforming situation and the problems we've had with this property over 20 years, we just, we just feel it's time.
I appreciate that. And I think I would feel more comfortable if I had somebody in front of me from perspective 100 Center group that may invest in it, if they were here and said, you know what, if that thing were gone, we would be more inclined to buy it. Not guaranteed, but more inclined to buy it. I mean, we just don't know where they stand.
Right. I, yeah. I can't help with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions for Mr. Prince?
Well, Ken, as was said, thank you for the, your diligent work in putting together all the information that you shared with us this evening, and the time that it took. And a couple of follow-up questions. We talked about the purchase price, and thank you for clarifying that. I want to make sure, just as with Dodge, when we added that property to the acquisition list, we talked about some of the anticipated future costs, what we suppose is going to be the demolition costs, et cetera, et cetera. So with regard to this property, if it's added to the list, what would, what do we anticipate is going to be the demolition cost?
The only thing that we have programmed right now is, in fact, the demolition cost, and we estimate that to be about 100,000 dollars.
Okay. So I thought we were in that ballpark, but I just wanted to make sure. If memory serves, when we did the Dodge acquisition, we also talked about the source of funding for that purchase. With regard to this property that's in front of us this evening, what would be the source of the funds that we would use to acquire it, and then, you know, the demolition costs and other investments that we'd make?
Our only real source to do this type of project is our tank segment financing district, so it would be the consolidated TIF district.
Okay. So our TIF district, as we've done with other redevelopment projects, would be used to fund this. What would the acquisition of this property and the anticipated demolition and other associated costs due to our plans for the use of TIF in terms of potentially forcing us to reprioritize what we had otherwise planned to do?
Stay tuned in May. Come to the Redevelopment Commission, and you'll see what we've outlined regarding. Dodge is obviously a much bigger, as I indicated, you know, years ago, we had programmed the million dollars for an acquisition and demolition project at the Hundred Center. We didn't have to shift for what we're suggesting here. The Dodge has really re-racked. The Dodge project, in addition to significant increased cost in construction that's happening right now, I can tell you, is really throwing our projections in TIF way out the door. And I'll use the example because I take responsibility for it, but we were planning the replacement of Fire Station Number Two, and this isn't public yet, but you asked, so you get it. So Fire Station Number Two, when we built that facility in 2013, we built it all-in, including the road extension, for about 5 million dollars. So in 2020, when we were doing it, the projections for, okay, we want to plug in replacing that, I put a number of 7 and 1/2 million into it, 50% more than what we did in 2013. Cost of inflation, I get it. Anybody want to take a guess on what the architect's estimate is for the replacement of Fire Station Number Two right now?
Much more than what we had anticipated.
14 million dollars to replace Fire Station Number Two. So our scrambling is not just Dodge, but we have multiple projects now that are costing much more money than they used to based on the current bidding environment.
I appreciate that, but let me try to get to the point that I'm going to need to help make a decision tonight, not in the future when we have, you know, a meeting about another project. But is a fair statement that the scope of the anticipated investment here is nowhere near the scale of the scope with regard to the anticipated investment for Dodge, to the point that it wouldn't require as much reprioritization potentially with regard to how we're going to spend our TIF money out into the future?
Right. And I don't want to dig more into the weeds than I already have, Mr. President, but to give you, we are reaching a point in the TIF district of where it will make sense on very large projects, and I use the athletic facility, I use the Mill Phase Two, where we're going to look to create separate TIFs where the tax generated from that project pays for the infrastructure and the improvements associated with it that are needed to serve it. So when you talk about the parking garage for the Mill Phase Two, capturing the increment from the project over a period of 20-some years is going to pay for the investment itself. So we'll spin it out of one TIF and put it into another, so it doesn't adversely affect our cash projections. So if there's a situation here, we have the million dollars that we're looking to invest immediately to put skin in the game, but then I look at the map here, and there could be public investment for a pedestrian bridge crossing the raceway that connects it. There could be public walks on both Cam Island that would be additional public investment. So let's round those off and say an initial 2 million dollars of investment on top of that. What I can't tell you is, we typically want to do an investment that's commensurate to the investment being put into it. So in terms of, for lack of a better term, if somebody came and just wanted to replace the windows and open up an antique mall and not do anything into the Hundred Center right now, we probably wouldn't do much of an investment. If somebody really wants to rehab it and then does the, all the fire suppression, all the mechanical, electrical, and things that are associated with that that drive up millions and millions of dollars, that's going to provide for the longevity that would potentially be more of a desire for the city to make that investment happen, to protect that investment.
And I think we're inching toward the answer that I'm looking for. So it sounds to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that subject to those other factors, the reinvestment in the 100 Center, the costs of whatever it is that we do on into the future, that a good working number right now for the total investment, if we add this to the acquisition list, would be approximately 3 million dollars.
Right. And I can tell you, just from having worked on it, we don't have anything more than the 1 million dollars currently programmed into it.
So that's subject to a lot of analysis and a lot of events, but clearly, this acquisition would trigger the potential for some other investment down the road on the part of the city.
Potentially, you bet.
And with regard, I'm glad that.
Am I excused, Mr. President?
No, not, yeah. With regard to the slide that you have up right now, with regard to that green space, I like that idea. Oh, the Public Green Plaza. With regard to that, and I know this is a concept, so this is very, very speculative.
Right.
But would something along the lines of that Public Green Plaza require some additional investment on the part of the city rather than being privately funded, or does that remain to be seen?
So, and this is just my opinion, and there's a lot of details to be worked out, but if it's a public improvement where the public would have access to it like a park, it may warrant the city's investment. If it is a private, only to serve the development investment, then we would stay away from it, and we would say, developer, that is on you.
But again, just to reiterate, this is a concept. This is not chiseled in stone. This is what could potentially make sense if the property is acquired. It's not to indicate that this will be exactly what happens, subject to all those other factors that we keep talking about.
That's correct. And so to answer your question, it could go either way.
Okay. I think you actually either answered all my questions or wore me down by. But again, I appreciate the time and the effort that you put into your work and your patience with us this evening and answering all our questions.
Your patience with me. Thank you, Mr. President.
My pleasure. Any other questions for Mr. Prince at this point? Thank you, Mr. Prince. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? It appears that there is.
Good evening. I'm afraid it's getting late, but my name is Joe Grable. I maintain offices at 602 Lincoln Way West in Mishawaka, immediately adjacent to the 100 Center where I reside. I'm here in a couple of different capacities. And Mr. Benicki, you indicated that you'd feel differently if you knew that eliminating this blight would have a positive impact on the redevelopment potential of the main brewery building. I'm here in one capacity as the Realtor that represents the buying entity that's buying that building, and I can assure you that eliminating this blight will have a positive effect on the ability to redevelop the 100 Center. There's no guarantee, because everything's contingent on the ability to secure financing. I was also the Realtor that represented the entity that bought that hotel. That hotel was on the market, or apartment building was on the market for a million dollars. And the reason that it sold at such a dramatic discount was because many of the tenants were not paying rent. It was in very poor condition. And I managed that during the time that the, on behalf of the ownership entity, during the time that the electric was disturbed there. And I will tell you that during that time, many resources were provided to the residents of that apartment complex. There were, in fact, at the time of the transformer fire, which was not an equipment failure of the apartment building, it was a transformer fire, and those things do happen. At that time, the Penn Township trustee offered emergency hotel rooms for anybody that wished it. The building ownership offered free moving to what I refer to as the Lincoln Highway Inn. I think it's the Mishawaka Inn now. But free transportation to move all the household belongings so that people could rent apartments at the other location, knowing full well that many of them during that time during COVID could not be evicted. However, free moving and negotiated subsidized rentals, so the rentals inside this complex were less expensive than the rentals at the Lincoln Highway Inn. And the ownership entity there was willing to pay the difference in rent to the landlord at the Mishawaka Inn for three months for anybody willing to move. Nobody was willing to move. The Penn Township trustee never had anybody, no resident of that complex, was willing to fill out the paperwork in order to qualify for free hotel rooms. And there was no limit on the number of nights. Initially, three were offered, but it was extended beyond that. And nobody was willing to fill out the paperwork indicating what their income was. Many of the folks that resided in that apartment complex continued to collect social security disability or continued to be gainfully employed and were not eligible for the protections under the extended COVID. However, they played the game out as long as they possibly could, and of course, it took a long, long time to get the evictions. I was responsible, as the property manager, for paying the legal bills, which were tens of thousands of dollars, to effect those evictions. And even after eviction orders were obtained, many residents refused to be vacated, and the police had to be involved. Even after the police evicted them, and it's the Sancho County Sheriff's Office, some residents broke back in and moved back in, right? I mean, it's apocalyptically bad. And so you're absolutely right. This probably seems like a lot of money. But by market metrics, it's a very small amount of money. We're talking about roughly 30,000 dollars per unit. The new 15 million dollar complex that's proposed for Front Street has a per-unit cost of approximately 140,000 dollars, right? Could somebody go in there and put some lipstick on the pig? Sure they could. And to that end, I will tell you that the ownership group was approached by a member of the Sancho County Council, asking, would they be willing to make this available for the hotels for the homeless program, right? The revenue that would have been generated by turning it into a homeless center would have been in excess of 25,000 dollars per month. Now, what do you figure that makes the investment worth if you're receiving 25,000 dollars per month in income, right? However, I discouraged the ownership entity from doing that, because while there is a need for homeless centers throughout Sancho County, I felt it would be a wholly inappropriate use. So now I'm going to put my other hat on, right? I'm here in my capacity as the president of the 100 Center Property Owners Association. That's the commercial condominium that includes the hacienda, Mexican Restaurant Building, the FSSA building, the building that houses Finello's, the building that formerly housed Smokestack, and the building that presently houses Jackson's cigar bar. During the time that Jackson's cigar bar was there, it was broken into twice. Both times through the work of Mishawaka's finest, including one police officer chasing one of the perpetrators into the river, the residents were located, and they were residents of the Cam's Island Apartments that had broken in not once, but twice, right? Lots of vandalism caused, broken windows, things like that. So I really believe this is an opportunity to eliminate blight. I really believe that the 30,000 dollar-ish cost per unit is a fraction of a fraction of what it would cost. Even the tiny homes that are going to be built on Jefferson, those tiny homes, which are about the same size as those hotel units, are going to cost about 75 to 80,000 dollars per unit. So 30,000 dollars per unit is not very much money, and I can assure you, with less than 10,000 dollars per unit, those things could be rented out, but they're not going to attract the same kinds of tenants that are going to wind up inside the building when you're spending 140,000 dollars on it, right? So with that, I think I've provided my perspective, and I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the council members have.
Thank you, Mr. Grable. Any questions? Mr. Benicki?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Grable, for speaking up. What would it cost to kind of renovate that building, do you think?
Well, I can tell you, my estimate would be between 1 and 1/2 and 2 million dollars, right? And that's not a number plucked strictly from air. Presently, construction costs are extraordinarily high. I was at an Indiana Commercial Board of Realtors conference, and they said, in the pandemic, they were projecting that construction costs were increasing by 1 and 1/2 percent per month. In fact, at this year's commercial conference, they said, commercial costs are going up, construction costs are going up by 3% per month. 36% annualized rate of inflation. Part of that. of inflation. Part of that is because of the labor shortage, in particular in the skilled trades. I think Mr. Compton can certainly speak to that. My son worked as a construction wireman with the IBEW. There's a critical shortage of skilled construction workers. But the other piece of it is the pandemic and the lack of building supplies. I can tell you that the three weeks and change that it took to reinstall the electric there was not because anybody wanted those residents sitting in those inhumane conditions, it's because it was a struggle after contracting, contacting almost a dozen different electrical contractors to find anybody willing to drop their existing schedule, to drop their existing backlog, and on an emergency basis, do it. Now, we did find a contractor willing to do it, but they pulled off, pulled off that job not once, but twice, because TV cameras were present. And they said, I'm not going to get beat up for coming out here like I'm the bad guy, right? They said, we're not going to work while TV cameras are here, okay? So the other piece of it was the, the wire, the particular wire that was required for the conductors for that. And this is just one small example. That wire gauge was not available from any of the big three electrical supply houses, not even in Chicago. Ultimately, it was sourced two and a half weeks later from a, a company in Rochester, New York, and it was express trucked here in order to be able to hook it up. We approached Mishawaka Utilities and said, hey, is there any way that the overhead lines that you guys use, could we buy those? But it's a different specification. Mishawaka Utilities and Beau from the building department, they worked heroically to try to, they set a temporary pole there, because it required a special tugging machine to pull the lines underground. I mean, they really worked heroically to try to get it installed. The folks that were hooking up the car battery, the gentleman that did that was the same person that was after he was evicted, broke in and broke into another unit to live there after he had been legally evicted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mammalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick follow-up question to Mr. Benicki's. So thank you for your presentation. You'd stated about a million, million and a half of.
Well, I, I think I said a million and a half to $2 million, right?
So I guess to that point, would, after investing that large amount of money, you, the investor would not be able to maintain the current rent cost?
Oh, of course not. No, it would have to be dramatically higher rents in order to justify that, right? And, and honestly, there were seven different banks that were approached about financing the Cam's Island Department. Six of them took a pass. One of them did it only because I personally pledged other property as collateral. Nobody wanted a loan on this project. That's going to continue until the main brewery building at the 100 Center. If we've left that building dormant for five years, and the main brewery building at the 100 Center were redeveloped, there's no question we could find another developer, right? But over the life cycle of that investment, who's going to hold that for five years and wait, right? Not very many prudent investors. I mean, Ken's done the math. The ownership entities tried to be completely transparent. I mean, the flood insurance alone on that building is $14,000 a year, right? That's not counting the regular insurance that you have to have on it. That's not counting the $6,000 a month plus in utilities. That's not counting any management costs. That's not counting any of that, right?
So I guess just to reiterate, my point was going to be that the same, the same people that were living there previously would not be able to afford it after.
Unequivocally, zero chance they could afford to live there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
You're not getting away that easy, Mr. Grable.
I thought I died.
Nice try. But thank you for the information that you shared. You're gracious to share much of the same information with me via phone, and I appreciated that.
Of course.
Well, I want to follow up on a couple of points that you made this evening with regard to the impact that the acquisition of this property to demolition of the current structure and some high-quality redevelopment could have on, first and foremost, the 100 Center Brewery property itself. What I took from your comments, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that in your professional opinion, all of those things would enhance the marketability and the attractiveness of an investment into the brewery itself for some further redevelopment in that vicinity, isn't it?
That's absolutely true, but I got to tell you honestly, you got to be a little bit crazy to take on the 100 Center, right? My attachment to the 100 Center is purely emotional, right? I grew up going to the movies there. I grew up buying stuff at the Leather Banana, getting my hair cut there at the main event. WRBR had studios in there. I mean, and it's that attachment and the desire ultimately to see it redeveloped into a vibrant mixed use. I mean, I literally live right next door to the complex. I put my money where my mouth is. I moved from Grainger to downtown Mishawaka in order to be next door to the 100 Center, because I care deeply about Mishawaka. I've had the opportunity at one time or another with most of you to be out to lunch, or, or to deal with you over the past 31 years that I've appeared before this body. I care deeply about Mishawaka. I want to see it redeveloped, and I really believe that eliminating the wooden Indian East will be a positive for redevelopment there.
Well, we'll take him. And we appreciate the investment and the attachment to the community that everybody has, including yourself. So it sounds like even if it won't dramatically improve the marketability of the 100 Center proper, it at least is not going to hurt the marketability of that part.
You're absolutely correct.
And then let's talk about the tenant association that you also represent.
Sure.
So switch hats. Same type of question. Does the redevelopment of this property also accrue a benefit to those other owners in the periphery surrounding?
Of course. And so ironically, the way this association was created, the six property owners, I think I identified five of them, the six to be in the main brewery building, but the apartments were never a part of the commercial association. So they had an easement that gave them access along Schellinger Square Lane and back to Island View. And in fact, what they call the Motel Lane is actually owned by the 100 Center Properties Owners Association. So when they would throw mattresses on the riverbank, it would be the association's burden to clean those up. I mean, even since the hotel is gone, and since the 100 Center main brewery building owners have been negligent, the association has continued to go back there and patrol at least once a week in collaboration with Joe Van Nevel and the code enforcement team. They've been very diligent about letting us know when there's an issue. But my own children picked up heroin needles there cleaning, cleaning things up. It was bad. And as the mayor, to steal the mayor's line, addition by subtraction, in this particular instance, I believe is a real community benefit.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Grable, Mrs. DeMaide?
Good evening, Mr. Grable. Thank you, Mr. President. Playing devil's advocate here.
Sure.
You have that building, and it has 24 units? Is that correct?
Actually, I think it's 30 units, but one of them had been used as a management office, so it's referred to as both 29 and 30 units, but it was built as 30 units, one of which is the manager's office.
Okay, and I, I'm sure that it would be cost prohibitive to take those 30 units and put them into six units, to make them condos or townhomes or something of that nature?
It, it's a fair question. I can tell you, it hasn't even been explored. I'm working on another project right now in Elkhart. It's about a 4,000 square foot building, right? And the architectural costs alone are $26,000, right? I can only imagine what re-engineering this might cost in architectural fees. The other thing is, today, legally, that ownership group could fix some broken windows, paint the thing, fix drywall, fix any broken plumbing, and be up and running without any legal need to sprinkler or anything, without any legal need to upgrade the fire exits from what they are right now, and it could be legally occupied, either as a hotel or as apartments, right? That's the way it sits right now. If somebody were to blow through those walls, they would absolutely have to go in and fire sprinkler. They would have to come up to all the latest health safety codes, and my expectation is, not having gotten architect's estimates, that would be very, very expensive. I can't say it would be impossible. I can only tell you that as long as the main brewery building looks the way that it does, I can't imagine any prudent investor making, committing that kind of capital, entertaining that kind of risk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward. No, we usually don't let people tag team on us, but if you're on your best behavior.
Excuse me, just got the joke right here when I come out. Mr. President and members of the board, thank you. My name's Scott. This is Mary Lou Stevens, and we're probably one of the closest residential homeowners next to this complex. And we've seen it come and go over the years. Sorry. And when we first got married 36 years ago, we actually used the 100, that, that hotel as a place for people to stay. So we know it was something back in its day, but unfortunately, now we've lived where we are for 30 years, and we've seen nothing but negative things happen. What I would like to, to say is, is I've, I've heard stories, and I'm not going to go about what happened, because everybody's heard all those stories. I'm worried about what's going to happen. Let's say we, we do try to fix it up and, and do something with it. What kind of tenants would it, would it attract? You're not going to be able to get the same level of tenants that you have, say, at the Buter Park Apartments over there at the mill. The rent's going to have to be a lot less, as I think Joe had just mentioned. In order to knock out walls, you're going to have to bring it up to code, and that's just not going to be probably something that's going to happen over there. So if we keep it as is and just dress it up, you, you're not going to be able to get those prices, so you're going to have $500 and $600 rents, and you're not going to, you're not going to be able to attract those type of people. So that's our opinion. We would like to see that 100 Center. It's been going downhill for quite a long time, and, and being right next to it, we're waiting for our property values to rise when this property value rises. So we're, we're all in favor of, of seeing this property go away and, and go to these developments that they've displayed up here.
I would also like to add that we, I think are a fair representation of our neighbors in the area, and we've been there 30 years. Some of our best friends are our neighbors. This has been something we've discussed numerous times over the years, and we do call it Mishawaka Wooden Indian. So I know that's been joked about, kind of laughed at up here, but you need to know, your constituents are also calling it the Mishawaka Wooden Indian. And because we live there, it's, we, we have kind of thought it was a no-brainer just to see it. We've been praying for years that somebody would bite and just tear it down. But we also owned an event space that overlooked the parking lot to that, and while we were fixing that up, and while we were getting that going and we had events, we saw somebody come out in a body bag. We had, in that same day, the police were called there multiple times. This was just one day of fixing it up. And we were very happy whenever there was an event that was dark out, so that if anybody looked out those windows and could see, and that was the first time those windows were open over 20 years, they were boarded over, and now when we open them up, are we so glad to get sunlight in, and now we know why they boarded them up. The downstairs windows were boarded up, the upstairs windows were boarded up, because it was overlooking that. Who's going to want to run a business there, overlooking that? So it has just been, not, we, it's been overdue in our minds, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Stevens? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward.
My name is William Duxbury. I live at 505 Cam Island Place. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I just kind of wanted to be here to kind of find out what's going on, but as a board member of the towns at, at Cam Island, all of us discuss this on a fairly regular basis. We'd love to see something happen. We're obviously in support of this, but we're fairly new to the area. Moved here from Grainger, and we've been really impressed with what you folks have done, the leadership in Mishawaka has done. It's amazing, except for that. There's so much good stuff going on, and, and then you look at this, and I know it's got history, and I know it's important, but, and I don't know about the finances, that's what all, that's your job. And you've done a great job so far. But I just wanted to say, as a new resident, what a cool place. I mean, I think we counted 13 restaurants within walking distance of our place. You don't have that everywhere. Mishawaka's pretty cool, and it's unique. And boy, to do something with this would be just amazing. And I think this apartment building going would be the first step in that. Now, again, I don't, I don't know any details or the numbers or any of that stuff. That's, that's for you guys to work out. But just as a fairly new resident, looking at this whole thing and the progress that's been made, it's just been phenomenal. So I just want to let you know, as a new resident, we fully support this. I'm also on the, on the board, and like I said, we don't talk about it every meeting, but it does get discussed quite a bit. In fact, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anyone that would be against it, except for from the financial standpoint.
All right. Thank you, sir. Welcome to Mishawaka. We're glad to have you. Hold on a second. Are there any questions for Mr. Duxbury? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? If so, please come forward.
Excuse me, taking a little while to get here. I'm a resident of Cedric House, Condom Minutes.
For the record, could you please state your name and address?
My name is Vic Kaznan, and I live at 820 apartment or unit 110 at Cedric House, Condom Minutes. And I've been here five years, and I've seen nothing, but this, this particular area we're talking about is going downhill, and it's not getting any better. I pay $264 a month. I own my unit, and everyone owns their units there, but I pay $264 a month to take and maintain the grass, snow removal, and appearance of the building and that. And I don't see how anybody is going to be able to do, renovate those places and then not have someone, a rent that would maybe be $600, $700 or $800 or whatever. And I had a, a unit that I sold recently, and the units that, that I had, one particular person lived there, and I, I gave him a break all the time, and he's, he's like paying like $600 bucks a month now, plus his utilities and everything. And I just can't understand how we could think that that particular unit, that hotel, would, could be improved any and not, it being the expense that, that these people that couldn't afford it before. And, and it, I, I just can't understand it. And so I, I, I look forward to all the improvements that have been done. A lot of people in my particular place, where we live at, at Cedric House, they're, they're afraid to even walk by the building, let alone even, you know, in this beautiful riverwalk we have and everything else. And now, we, this could, this could really help out a lot, I think, if they, if they went along with either tearing this down or selling it or doing something with it. And I, I just, I hope to see this in, in, in the time we have left on this earth. I hope that they, they do something with it. And I want to thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kaznan? No, I made you turn around for nothing. Any questions? You're all set.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for, you know, taking the time to, to put all this information together. I know there was a lot of questions that I personally had, just to, you know, make sure we're doing the right thing. And I do have one more question for Mr. Prince. And that question is, there was an email that was distributed, and that email had speculation from one of the close neighbors that we were in fact buying the building, we were going to demolish it, and then we were going to sell it to the developers of the 100 Center, or the purchasers of the 100 Center. If we tear this down, we're going to retain that property.
I would hope not. I think at some point in time, we would want to work with the developer, and, and part of it is, is if it has the public walkway, we may retain some of it.
Okay.
And add it to the park, but particularly the parking area itself would be more logical to go with the building itself. And what we try to do in these redevelopment projects is to ensure that that's not private pub, parking, that it's, in fact, has a public component to it, so it would remain over it. But we don't know what's going to happen on the center itself, Councilman Benicki. So I don't, our goal is to aid in the redevelopment of the 100 Center main complex, whether that involves the sale of the property, the direct capital improvements by the city, or any other means. We're looking to do that to serve the citizens of Mishawaka. So I would hate to say right before you that, oh, no, we're not going to sell the property and retain it. Until we have a development plan, it's premature to say that.
Well, then it would, would it be premature to buy the building at this point in time then, until we have a definitive answer?
Again, I think I've answered that previously, but I, I think it gives us leverage and. Again, I think I've answered that previously, but I think it gives us leverage into the property, and it's also available right now. So it would prevent any further investment in the property, which we think would be a mistake. For somebody to put, I think it's Mr. Grable said, lipstick on a pig, we want to prevent that. We want to knock the building down and remove any potential for that to happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Prince before he sits down again?
Nope.
No. Thank you, Mr. Prince. Benicki, anything else?
Uh, well, I'll continue, Mr. Prince, for that. A little conflicted on which way to go on this with, you know, just some of the timings and smell tests and, you know, what's for the best. And, you know, looking at the big picture, would it be nice to see it gone? Yes. Would it be nice to see it used, you know, for people that don't have as much? Yes, you know. It's really, really, you know, a tough, tough decision. I'm going to go on the side of the administration and, you know, hope that we do the right things. We just can't bail everybody out. We can't buy every piece of property. Otherwise, we won't have any tax-paying entities, and, you know, we just need to do the right things. And so I will support this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. Hickson Ball. Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Benicki, for sharing your continued thoughts this evening. You brought up a lot of valid points. I think, me personally, my first and foremost is the safety of our first responders and our other city employees that have been called down there countless hours, and the nearby residents as well. The only downside that I could find was that we were eliminating thirty units of low-income property. And I think it has been validated that in order to get this livable, a large investment would be required. And I think, and in my opinion, at that point, the rent would need to be raised in order for the investor to recoup his or her money to make it profitable. And the same folks that were living there previously would not be able to afford it. And that is speculation, but my opinion. And perhaps it's the years that I've spent on the redevelopment commission in a former life. I think this is the missing piece to a beautiful redevelopment puzzle. You know, I'm nostalgia as well as everyone else with the Hundred Center. I used to hang around there. U ninety-three was down there, Hacienda, the movie theaters, Pier One, et cetera. And I think weekly, I have a conversation with residents, man, if we could just do something with the Hundred Center. And it is, in my opinion, it's a gem, and it has the potential to be a gem. As I stated before, it's, I think, in my opinion, it's the missing piece to the entire Riverwalk. When I have out-of-town guests traveling, it's like, go down to the Riverwalk, see what the city's been, what we've been working on. Just before you get to this spot, do just a little U-turn and maybe go around. I think the purchase of this building is the catalyst to redevelopment, and that's, again, my opinion. I think we've taken that risk down in the Riverwalk before, and it seems to pan out. Of course, we never know what the outcome would be, but I would guess on the side that this will be a catalyst to help develop this over-neglected piece of property. So since I only have five percent left on my computer, I'll wrap this up. But in short, I will be in support of this this evening. I want to thank all the first responders for the time and effort that they've put in in the years past and to confirm the bug bed, or the bedbug concern. At the time I was traveling with Station Number One, as soon as that call that was dispatched, that address, I think I did hear a bedbug chant. So they know that by name. They've seen it. They've brought it back to the stations. So just wanted to confirm that. But I am in full support of this this evening. Thanks for all that were involved, Mr. Prince, the mayor. I know it's been a long vision and a lot of effort to answering a lot of the questions of the council this evening, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti. Mrs. Volker?
Hi, thank you so much. I also want to thank everybody for presentations, and I don't want to regurgitate what other people have said. But I want to put my Historic Preservation Commissioner hat on. And as president of the, or chair, queen of the Historic Preservation Commission, this is, of course, intense interest for the commission, its intense interest for the state of Indiana, One Hundred Center and the Cam Brewery in particular. And I want to think, I'm just very much in favor of making this the jewel that it could be. And as the fourth district councilwoman, I'm very, very happy too. So I'm certainly very much in favor of it and putting my fellow council members to be that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Belovich?
Yes. Thanks for the information, Mr. Prince and everyone else who made a report tonight. I think if the council who sat up here twenty-plus years ago could have looked at a crystal ball and seen what we heard tonight, they certainly would have been willing to pay the half a million dollars to purchase and tear that facility down. And I'm happy tonight that I hope that, as a council, we vote in favor of destroying the building, tearing it down, and polish the jewel that we have sitting down here to the west.
Thank you.
I just want to take the time and say that I think three things tonight. The, I guess, the buy-in or purchasing will benefit public safety greatly. I've personally been in that place at night. I've been there on several calls, and it is dangerous. And it is scary, as the fire chief said. You don't have any room to get out of there if something happens. And if you do get out, you might fall over the railing because it's so loose, and it's been loose for fifty years. The other thing is, I think it's going to benefit public safety. I think it's going to benefit the complex. I think it's going to benefit the population of Mishawaka in whole. Like Mr. Mamalanti said, everyone's talking about the Hundred Center. Everybody wants to see it come back to life. And, Mr. Benicki, while I know eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money, and I have a problem spending that too, I think it's just a little, it's going to be the spark that will ensure that we have several million dollars invested in the Hundred Center. I'm hoping, I'm praying that's what it does tonight, and I will support it.
Thank you, Mr. Hazen. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. That facility at one time was a jewel, and it was an advantage to the city of Mishawaka. But over the years, it's just deteriorated to where now it's a blight. And it's a deterrent to where it attracts people that we really don't want in Mishawaka. It's causing a lot of problems, not only for our residents and the neighbors, but also for the police department, the fire department, and all the other departments in the city of Mishawaka. It's outlived its usefulness. By taking it down and that, we can expand. We can put something in it that's going to draw people into the area and into that, maybe a developer or whatever. But right now, it's a detriment. We need to get rid of that facility. So I'll be in favor of the proposal here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mrs. DeMaide?
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you who came to speak tonight. It's what we needed to hear. And I will be voting for this this evening. It is not just for the redevelopment purpose, but for the, I'm voting for it because it is such, it's the best thing to happen to the city. So we are for the citizens of Mishawaka. They will enjoy what is to come of the Hundred Center, and I look forward to enjoying it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let me add my thanks to everyone who shared information with us this evening, particularly the department heads. And all of it was, in my opinion, very helpful. But those data points, those statistics that Chief Wackowski and Chief Ray shared with us, in my mind, were very powerful. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that legwork. I can understand Mr. Benicki's hesitation with regard to this. I think that there is, this opportunity feels a little different to me as well as opposed to the Dodge property that was recently added to the list. But not only with what he shared with us this evening, but in some prior conversations, I appreciate Mr. Prince helping me think out loud and work through some of the concerns that I had with regard to this. The same with Mr. Grable as well. He was very helpful in trying to address a number of concerns. And in particular, helping to confirm that what occurred last summer was more a function of the pandemic and some factors beyond the control of anyone rather than being something else. So that was very helpful to me as well. What was also important for me today was I had a chance to walk down to this property. So Chief Ray, I did just what you suggested. And Mr. Prince's pictures do not do justice to the state of that building. It looks much better on the big screen than it does live and in person. And I could see why it would be difficult for public safety and others to be able to do their job down there. And I understand the concerns of those who live in close proximity. It's understandable. The flip side of it is that this is the type of issue that everybody in the community has an interest in. And the dollars at issue are significant enough that I think it was important for us to spend the time that we did this evening, working through the issues, asking the questions, receiving the answers, and really doing our due diligence. So thank you to everyone who helped in that process. On balance, although I can understand the hesitation, I agree with Mr. Prince. The market has spoken. If this was going to be redeveloped in any of the ways that we've talked about this evening, I think it would have happened already. And to me, the investment that we make here and any additional investment is an investment in helping the Hundred Center, in the largest sense, undergo what I hope, and I think we all hope, will be the Renaissance that I think is very possible and that it can return to what it is that it was back in the day when Mr. Grable and I were much younger men, and it was WRVR, not U ninety-three that was down there, Mr. Mamalanti. But I appreciate the information and the thoughtful questions that the council posed this evening. But I also will be joining in support of this resolution. I do think that while we need to maintain the agility as a community to use TIP and other resources to try to purchase these properties and undergo the redevelopment, we're probably at the point, and it may be as soon as the meeting coming up that Mr. Prince referenced, that we'll have an opportunity to be able to take a little bit of a strategic pause and talk about what it is that we can, we have the wherewithal to be able to do moving forward. I would hope that we'd always be able to react to circumstances as they occur. But I think that the concern on the part of those in the community, that there has to be a limit on how many good things we can purchase and do at one point in time, is a discussion for us to have in another venue. But on balance, I will be supporting this, and I appreciate everybody's participation in tonight's proceeding. With that, if there are no other questions or comments, I will call for a question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson Ball?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine two zero?
Thank you. This evening, we have no ordinances on second reading, so we will move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak with respect to not agenda items only under privilege of the floor. And we appreciate the fact that nobody is availing themselves of that opportunity. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, is there any new business to come before the council, Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. Hickson Ball. Just another reminder that our normal twin branch neighborhood watch meeting was scheduled for this Wednesday, May eighteenth. But due to the conflict of the Police Memorial Service, we've canceled that meeting, and we're suggesting that our constituents and our attendees attend the memorial service. So we will not have our normal twin branch neighborhood watch meeting this Wednesday. We will have, our next scheduled meeting will be June fifteenth. And our guest speaker, if you're still willing, is Mr. Mayor for a very condensed state of the city. And that will be at seven o'clock at Fire Station Number Four.
Yes, sir. Other new business, Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that the West End Neighborhood Meeting will be on Thursday, the nineteenth of May. And our guest speaker there will be Mr. Joe Neville, Van Neville, the Code Enforcement. And he'll be talking about the guidelines that the Code Department has to work within. And so it should be a very interesting meeting, and I invite everybody to be there. And also, as usual, will be Sabrina West End Bakery Goods. So the council, audience, everybody is invited. So thank you. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Other new business.
Then, as Mr. Mamalanti mentioned, this is National Police Week. And of course, we want to invite all the members of the public to participate in the memorial service this coming Wednesday at six. Six, six P.M. at the police station downtown. If you haven't had an opportunity to attend in the past, it really is worth the time. It's a moving ceremony and an opportunity to spend some time and express some appreciation to our public safety and law enforcement officers who do a good job. So certainly, we invite people to attend that. But I think it's also important to acknowledge the hard work that our police department does on a daily basis, not just during National Police Week, but each and every day, twenty-four hours a day, in the city of Mishawaka. And we're blessed in this community to have strong public safety, strong governmental services across the board. As you've seen, I'm sure people who don't attend these meetings have been impressed by our department heads and what they shared this evening. And they're reflective of the quality of the people that we have working for us. But in particular, I don't think we can too often recognize the public service that our police department provides and acknowledge that not just during a particular week, but each and every day, they're worthy of our thanks, our appreciation, and our support. So thank you to our police officers and Chief Wackowski for what you do. And with that, if there is no other business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.